And now called to order the planning commissioner regular session of Tuesday, October 4th, 2016. Roll call. Uh, Buck was here.
Grant here.
Drew here. McCoy here.
Burke here.
Cassie here.
Let the record show that Commissioner, um, Salatpack is not under this hearing. Can we all stand for pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we get him before the comment?
You want to speak one?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Um, you want to speak to the adjutant issue?
Yes. Chairman, the tourism ordinance draft, which was at the determining in mid-December, was delivered back to the town with his markups on Thursday, the 29th. Realized it short notice, but that was circulated yesterday. And if the commission is interested in reviewing that markup at this meeting, obviously it wasn't on the agenda because the decision material went out on Tuesday last week. If it could be added as another item, we'll be good to say.
Do I have a motion to accept the tourism?
So, look.
As item D of number five of the business? Do I have a second?
Say it.
On the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Let the record show that the motion carried. And this is, as I mentioned to, um, Larry, I'm only wanting to entertain this if it doesn't drag me down like in the clock.
That was my concern.
Yeah.
At least we'll get a sense of what's involved and I did the next time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The magnitude of it is a bit... We don't know how many markets or one or two.
Okay.
I just think that against Jan Walker, bringing these stuff in place may...
Is put on any guidelines?
Oh, yeah. There was a number, interesting. I just wanted to expose folks to it and then they can decide later if we're going to do this really.
All this stuff someday.
Matt, we have any feedback on this one?
Just one little thing on, uh, I can remember B, I don't know what's going on. There's just some words in that sentence that's repeated.
Yeah, I saw that. Two wins in there, something like that.
Well, what about when he said?
Yes. That's my record, I will find it if not correct. Let's see. B. X, I, I. It was I.
I see it. There's an extra word after picket tables.
Yeah, there were picket tables located, just tables, pivot versions.
Yeah.
I know how that works.
Okay.
Uh, well, you know, let's see. Since picket tables were located. Or since there were picket tables located, that's second word.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll move. Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Reports. Sir, nothing to add to this month's report, Mr. Chairman, on the entertainment report.
Is there any movement going on to 207?
He has a permit that was pulled in June, about a lengthy six-month expiration. So, he does have another three months. He gets some movement on that permit before that two expires.
There is one thing that everybody knows in your world, item four. You stay on the report?
Yes.
No.
Next month is the month to vote for chairman vice chair. Okay?
We'll find out.
I'm just saying, that's all. Especially most of you are going to be surprised, that's all. Okay. The whole business. Does anyone have something else?
I was going to say, what's up with the VDA?
I actually pretty valued my faculty information, but in my office, there is some movement at least, encouraging movement on the 13th safety quarter plan. The VDA has been working on for, well, for a year. There were a couple of public meetings that were held at Community College last fall. And it was a common period, I believe, that closed in December. That project has slowed down for a number of reasons during spring. But they are ready to move forward with final draft of that, roughly 13th safety quarter. And it is the entirety of 13 from the bridge up until Narrow and Border. The two locations proximate to Cape Charles of any interest are at Food Line stop, or exit, or turn lane, and at the air wall. The Food Line don't expect to get a traffic signal, but there is some engineering that they propose to do by way of A-Markes. Also, there's a proposed proposal to put an access road from Food Line to Business 13 on the charity side. So people could have access.
Oh, okay.
So kind of have to go across the road trips.
Well...
But you don't have to turn out.
You don't have to turn out, you can turn, you can go up and get on that, and turn, and it can be crossed. To the VDA, you can. Yeah, there are actually quite a bit of accidents on that, I wonder if they are.
And that's the thing about Food Line, um, turn, intuitively we all worry about it. But the actual data on the crashes is low. So as a result, you're not going to get traffic like that.
Not.
Not.
Sure.
Pretty much where I was, yeah.
What's the problem? I missed what you said, Andy. What's the likelihood of getting the access road into Old 13 or Business 13?
That's part, I use that as part of the plan.
It is.
If you go to VDA's website and do a search, it'll pop up, I mean, it's pretty extensive. I mean, I read that Arlo Catler has given a lot of cut throughs of U-turn areas up in that 13. But you, it's there. It was post-summer, that's how I got it. But it's pretty good for this, for the Food Line, this would be the start.
And the folks at the Planning District Commission are answering questions.
I mean, what's block that?
He was chair of the meeting.
Yeah, he was, he was.
Any other reports before we move on to the business? Nope. Proposed reverse angle parking on Bay Avenue update.
Well, it's the end of the summer.
Sweet, let's do it.
So as a result, here's the second year summer data. Again, from Friday, the 10th through Sunday, September 11th. Then conducted observations and parking counts, again, using the 1999 police department parking count. In the spring of this year, I went around and spot tested that, and it still holds up. Bay Avenue count is 66 vehicles, assuming that they would be parallel parked in stalls in it. Would not have an install obviously as an irrational usage space or inefficient usage space sometimes. Okay. This year we had 44 observations, last year we had 82. Out of the 44 observations this year, 14 times the count exceeded 66, which makes for 31.8% of the time. Last year, out of the 82 counts, the number of times it exceeded was... I believe it was 27%, 26%? Anyway, the two-year average comes to 27, I said, 8% of the time. The parking exceeds 66, and that's on the west side of Bay Avenue from Washington to the pavilion.
What happens when it exceeds 66?
They go east side then?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much what happens. There's always some people who park on the east side of the street because that's, there's a difference in convenience there. At least in the morning, you get shade on the east side, people want to park their cars in shade. So they're always going to find people park on the east side. Typically, those aren't all high numbers once they get north of Tazewell. But at least between Tazewell and Mason, that's just an intense parking area. It does only matter if you're at the south end of the beach. So most people are on the east side of the street or west side of the street, about the south end. The north end gets pressured less, except when the east side, on the west side goes up. That's when you start seeing the heavy traffic will park on Bay Avenue that goes all the way up to Washington. That doesn't happen often, but that, that you do see there. The side streets is always harder to tell because you don't know on an individual basis who's a resident, who's a summer rental, who's going to the beach or to the beach. And the side streets have a different sort of pressure, as I pointed out. You lose birth space because, at least this summer, by the number of boat trailers that park there. And it's illegal to have a boat trailer when they have to come, they're just consumers of space. So you're working against a couple of things by way of course become normal. Which is that it's closed on the streets, and maybe you didn't have that in 1999 or, it's not mentioned. You also didn't have golf carts. And something that, that developed organically was the golf carts parking perpendicular. They take up, in Illinois, the golf cart, six feet. So they park perpendicular historically. Because, again, it's an inefficient use of space if you've got marked stalls. Because now you've got a vehicle that's small taking up one third of the parking space per sedan. One way of saying, if the purpose of the angle parking is to meet demand, the demand pressure, the demand pressure really doesn't show that it's...
Typically, yes. Do you feel any complaints? Do you get any complaints from residents in that area?
No.
Well, I'm based on this study, this is based on seven days a week.
Yeah. So... Yeah, not every day, and some of the observations from a year ago were twice a day. What I learned from first year to the second year was if you go out there 11:30 in the morning on Tuesday, or you go out there 3:15 on that same Tuesday afternoon, the number of cars hasn't changed all that much. Because it's not a heavy traffic. Then obviously, summer weekends, you're going to feel more pressure.
That's what, that's what I was getting at.
It drives through.
The time of day. Sunny day, weekend, it's generally packed from both sides to the gills. And the purpose of, in my opinion, of this parking would be to take that toll, help that scenario. Regardless, it's 27%, 27% of those over seven days. So during the weekends, not that much traffic, except in the summer.
And for a pre-dawn, the resort count, 27% is pretty hot.
Yeah. In theory, it shouldn't be that much.
And my, my biggest concern here is how do we accommodate parking by right of votes?
Can, we were, a couple of years ago, we dressed that, and it's a state of the art, it's a state of the road, we have no control. Remember that, it was like three or four years ago.
Well, we try to think of a...
Unless it presents a traffic hazard.
We try to restrict people.
I mean, if someone were too wide and they stick out and make you go past, and double y'all.
Yeah, we don't have that on me.
No, 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 no.
Side street, it doesn't have.
Side streets, it's illegal if you have to cross the double line.
Right, there isn't.
If there is a...
There's a couple streets that happen.
There are a couple instances in town where that exists now, but...
Well, remember we went through that whole, old parking track?
That was Tom, Tom Bondeals.
Yeah. That was, that was, three or four years ago, we went through that one.
And we can't control because it's state of the road.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting control. All I'm saying is we need to make allowances for it in the angle parking, reverse angle parking profile, whatever that happens to be. So that there is sufficient space for those vehicles to park.
There's no way.
You want...
If you had, if you had reverse angle parking, there's no way you'll know you have a boat.
No, 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 okay, you missed my point. Do we have to do reverse angle parking or non-reverse angle parking if there's no middle ground? Can we do some of one and some of the other? That's what I'm, that's all I'm saying there.
Yeah, well, you need to be full on reverse, whatever.
Yeah, full, obviously, it makes no sense, yes.
I mean, I don't know what people would be doing down there without any kind of, it's logical, yeah?
No, it's the same thing that's going on at Mason Avenue. They can't turn around and go down with a parallel parking, reverse angle parking. They're not going to do, they're not going to do it down Bay. I mean, there are people that come in that are guests that might be down there. George Ferguson, for example, his house is there. He doesn't, the summertime, he parks his boats by his house. But in the winter, he puts them in harbor for my house, which is annoying, because I have no control. It's just, I mean, he puts his boats there because he doesn't want to take them to school. I don't mind.
Well, I put my boat behind my house, and I moved my fencing 15 feet to have room for it. But it's paying me ass, I mean, I'd rather have that long.
Yeah.
I don't think we saw a significant increase in parking demand that could have happened. And, you know, my, my impression was it wasn't significant. It definitely from last summer when it looked like, you know, we could go another year without doing anything. And it wasn't like, you know, huge demand. Do something based on the survey.
The trend is up, right, but the trend is up.
But I don't think it's...
The trend is up over the weekend.
We shouldn't let votes cloud that issue, that's down there at least.
Yeah, it should be, it should all be.
And then we don't have to make decisions down there.
My whole point on, on the parking is accommodate tourists here. It's not the, it's not the ones that come here to rent. It's the weekend warriors that come down from Washafree or from Eastville or from Sheridan. They come to the beach. I know a lot of people that come from those areas, some come from Hungers area, but they're coming in and bringing cars to park. So it's kind of...
Most of these are locals because it is the only beach. It's the, like, paid for.
Right.
You know, whatever we do down there, if we do anything, one of the things I'd like to put on record is that we should... The islands should be built up, you know, by, that run down almost the center of the street. Because if we, if we were to institute reverse angle parking, I see a scenario where they might be driving across the distance or something.
Even there's also an issue with flooding down there. This is a very, so it's got, creating the...
Yeah, I know.
There was flood the other day, pretty bad. It was because of the full moon up top.
Yeah.
No, but it wasn't. So, well, you could use water up to the, create a K Avenue, that's like, that's nothing to do with it.
It's just, they can't, the high tide and the water can't drain out.
Right.
I mean, that's my whole thing. I mean, we're, we're turning up, I'm not saying we have to do it, but it's something really that keep an eye on.
Yeah, I think we should keep on doing it every summer. Especially look at that east side of Bay. If that starts to overflow, then, then that's the trigger, I think.
Well, the trigger is, you can look at, if you compare the, if you just did these studies in the weekend, this would probably be 100%.
No.
I was there, I was there every day this summer, and I thought so too, really. I was, I was expecting, you know, a heavier fill than we saw.
Basically based on the west side on the weekends?
Yeah, it was rare that, that the west side was ever completely full. It might be all set five or six spaces, but, yeah. I'm, I'm going to be the first one to suggest something that looks like a meaningful.
Okay. Any other comments?
I still encourage you to spray the empty crossbars.
Yes, yeah.
That's a beat up, that's a beat up.
Right, yeah.
That's, yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Do we have any other one to vote?
Mason. Two, that's it? Show my family, you shoot. Place where this beach is accessible, and that has any kind of accessible per on the side. If they, well, the industry also are. That's one of the ways to slow down traffic as well. And again, the police can tell you better about what specific issues on Bay Avenue I can't. Speeding is a factor issue. We can just have an issue with the re-complanting, and, you know, there's so much talk of traffic calming. And as a planning practice, that's fine, but I just wonder what the PD has as far as uncommon situations.
I have, going back to reverse angle parking on Bay, I had an experience this weekend about some issues, issues alike. Those of you who know me, I know I drive back to the coffeehouse for breakfast on Sunday morning. We go to leave, I go get her car because I drive her, it's just easier that way, so she maneuver her body out there. So I park out before the coffeehouse, like I've been doing for years. And I get talked to by one of the local job artists. And instructed that I should be using a handicap space. There is no handicap space by where she's coming out of that store, or restaurant. We need to talk to VDA about where there should be handicap parking for reverse angle parking.
When we, when we had the, like, last spring, spring of '15, when the old...
There's, there is in the parking lot.
Well...
I think, I'm not sure.
I, we had a parallel parking on Mason Avenue, there were two handicap spaces.
This was off-season, Sunday, very little traffic, you know, whatever.
And then when we took the permit in for the reverse angle parking, which gave us 28 additional spaces, VDA still required us to have two handicap parking stalls. And, you know, it's, it's their road and they improve parking.
I'm sure.
Again, knowing the population that we have and people's mobility issues.
Right.
Yeah, they may put it in the street.
Not only by the library, and it's not by...
Our dock, right?
Neverland's the name, Rosson. The other one is at the theater or, not the theater. Um, and it wasn't, Lumentary?
Yeah, right, Court of Theater, uh, Lumentary.
So that's what we got, that's it. You don't even have any handicap stalls parallel across the street on the south side.
Right, right.
Or on the side streets, for that matter. So, I, I don't disagree with your point.
No, I at least would approve that. No, 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 I'm just, I'm just bringing the issue to the front, that's all, nothing more than...
Because that's what's more of a consider, East Byway, when the town, when you get to the Capitol Plan in the winter, and the town goes to...
You know, it's going to be one each end of the street.
Or it's blocked.
Yeah.
Because I think that the back angle parking can also be difficult to come into, something like, I don't know, what the issue regards. Where it's parallel stalls is difficult to move.
Well, could the coffeehouse put up a non-binding handicap sign like churches do sometimes?
The churches, I think, will, I don't know, the church may, that park is still some good.
No, I mean, that's always clear. Yeah, for some, I think, will decide to do that.
I think you just repeated something that is not true. It's based, I don't know what people base this on, that parallel parking is less difficult than reverse angle parking. I don't understand your logic, people that say that. I mean, parallel parking, you've got a long side of the car, and you, you don't know exactly how far, where. You've got to compensate the quarter panel of the other car, you've got to compensate what's coming behind you, what's, what you're swinging out into, so...
I think that might have mattered. A number of, a number of people at my age are resistant to change.
You know, plus, I, plus, when all the drivers had, we were talking.
That's right.
So many people cannot do that.
But wasn't suggested, now the end of each line, so you're not really dealing with a car in front of you or just behind you? There's nobody said, at the end, at the...
No, I was saying, to be a...
No, but this is a comment in general, that parallel parking is easier than reverse angle parking. I've done it for years, I think I know.
I don't do it all, reverse group, turn in there.
Well, most of, most of the, the cars in the last couple of years have backup sensors on them on display, though.
Yes, if you sell your car, they're easy.
Mine's got a camera, it's...
That's a good car, it's a good car.
So I find, when I go down the road, I actually see cars actually swerve out of the road, and then back in that, I have a... What you do is, it's a third of the reverse angle, I mean, parallel parking. It's more seven, but...
I just think it's less common.
Yeah, it's very, it's less common.
I'm sure there's a lot of people who do this.
Yeah, we've been through this, I mean, the thing is, VDA told us that is their preferred method of parking at the time. It's too changed after they got locked and closed. Which made us all the more jacked up.
Well, there's a lot of information in the internet now, when they go through here, I can tell you that, you know, and the signs, the sort of town news. One, two, three steps, you know, you go, and, you know, you're signaling, the three-step thing of doing it, and I'm like, it's just... It's getting to be much more common.
And the bicycle association of America loves a point absolute reply because it's cut down for...
Well...
Corridors, we need to open up and walk on the bicycles, on the little side, people aren't aware of it, that causes a lot of accidents.
The whole town plan is to get more people on, on golf carts, on bicycles, on their feet, and get the automotive vehicles off the road, so if we, but apparently there's no getting around, not being able to put a bike lane in front of, on Mason because it's not white enough, and there's nothing to do about it, I guess that. But that, that certainly, drive issue home about the safety aspect of reverse angle parking, the statistics in which you're just, you can't argue.
I like your attention, you brought up another, did we separate the vehicles? Do we know what kind of vehicles versus golf carts in the recent years?
Ah, I have kept, I have kept track on that.
So I said there's more golf carts coming down instead of cars. It all seems like there are, I don't know.
Well, with, with all the work that VDA did on Cape Charles, no, no, it's going to be skewed for a while. Because you can't get there from here.
Bumpy, pretty bumpy, muddy.
No, well, okay, for a lot of folks, you can't get there from here. It's not impossible, but it's a disturbance.
Well, that's the other thing, too. On Big Creek?
Mm-hmm.
I've been on that dirt road a long time, I tried to break down...
No, you can't, it's almost impassable now. But...
I go on the road.
There's 200 yards or so over here breaking the law, that's, that's all you can do right now until they fix that.
Yeah, and thankfully, the police have been very gracious and polite.
Just like, do a little sack on the shoulder.
You have four foot shoulders?
Yeah, four foot shoulders. That's probably good for the heart now.
Yeah.
So what's the estimation, if we're going to, the reverse angle parking, Bay Avenue, we're just supposed to implement it like here? Is it going to, or any...
The active surveillance monitor, don't you?
Aye. Probably be good idea to go ahead with the crossbar.
Right, yeah.
Okay, right, crossbar. So that would be a motion to set forth, I guess, an application for marking crossings for reverse angles.
Of second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry.
So I don't want to stop that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Draft amendment to Article 3, Section 3.15b, limited access commercial activity in open space.
Following up on last month's discussion, the draft language is amended. To show the hours of operation of nine AM through sunset. Following the meeting, staff had an opportunity to talk with other department heads about some of the operational. Features of the program should move forward. Recreation Department is amenable to having their summer employee. Checking on the status of the area from time to time, as I, Building Department may that commitment as well. And preliminarily mentioned with the, discussed with the treasurer, the need for some. Seasonal or maybe to Pedlar's license to allow folks to conduct their business. With the idea that we recognize that there may be a measure of turnover from people to seek the license in May. There's someone who's expecting to be there, you know.
You know, particularly people that license needs to certainly, you know, because brick and mortar, I do a lot of business with all the people like that. And it's, I mean, I agree with you, it's extremely unfair that, you told Pedlar's license fifty bucks, but Pedlar license generally will one time. One time payment. Now you're actually, we're actually thinking about putting vendors down seven days a week, and the order turned out to be, you know, all day long. And they're generating revenue of the Pedlar license where the brick and mortars and pay, you know, their license fee based on their. Gross sales. That should be, I mean, the process should hopefully be the same. Right. I don't agree with that particular tax for license, I think it's excessive. But we gotta treat them fair on both sides. So everybody's paying the play, you know what I mean?
Do you have a sense of what that means? I understand it's volume based, but on, but on average, pardon?
Per sales.
I get it, I get the process, which I don't think is, I think it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of what an average is for the brick and mortars on Mason?
And it's probably what they're doing, I mean, you're ranging.
I get net sales, but they're pretty much similar.
No, gross, no.
Gross sales.
You're a restaurant.
Wow.
Well, I mean, there's several, it's a lot of the volume thing, so there's some tremendous amount of volume, so it turns out to do anywhere from eight hundred thousand to a million and a half, two million. So two million of your business is about four rent. So this guy is, this guy's down there, he says a hot dog cart.
Right.
And he's turning around and doing four, five hundred dollars a day.
That's a lot of hot dogs. Well, a lot of hot.
This here's range, this here's everything else.
I think it.
But you're there, if you're there for millions, you know, millions of dust. You know, it's not like it's conceivably possible, at least on the weekends, during the week, and I can make a swap.
I think it needs to be assessed definitely more than a Pedlar's license. It needs to be assessed at some type of reasonable amount for the season. I think that helps with the brick and mortar guys, they're not getting to sell like.
No, 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 I know that, but even, even the retail shops are probably anywhere from three to four hundred dollars a year for a little money.
Okay, so make it two hundred for a season. They're making most of that, most of that net sales is coming between in the season.
They're not gonna sell the volume of the brick and mortar, they're just gonna.
But when you're trying to put some equity to it, right, and they need to be somewhat equalized, you know, what's a Pedlar's license?
Fifty bucks per, what, event, week, month?
Yeah, Pedlar's license is only one time.
I'd agree with that one time, but, but one time assessment, a one time payment would be best because. Just, um, how are you gonna collect that date based on their gross sales? They're criminal.
You're not.
Right. And you're gonna, you gotta keep a tax record.
They have to have business licenses. They have to be, that's the whole problem, maybe you do something. Cash sales are the killer, it's hard to help, it's hard to help with this.
Yeah, I don't think they'll be like, I mean. I know. They can't be down there working out a single box, right, I mean, they have to have a cash register with a tape in it.
Right, necessarily.
Aren't they required to have that by all?
You're not gonna get a card to report sales.
Well, cash sales.
But they, all they have to do is sell them. I imagine, I think.
Well, merchant service, if there's a credit card, you have to track it, that's easy, cash you have to track.
Yeah, that's a big challenge.
I mean, I'm serious, cash, they may even say no cash.
Uh, that'll work. Well, I don't know the truth coming through. But anyway, so see, it is complicated. Yeah. So let's just forget that. For the one time fee on it, whatever we think is.
Well, I agree with that, you know, I think as a general concern, we don't have enough brick and mortar, eating establishments, this, I mean, this past summer, I don't know how many times I went to a restaurant, the rest, I could have used a phone, I suppose, but. Just not be surprised if everyone had an hour and a half wait, you know? And we don't wanna do anything that's going to hurt that, that we need more, not, not less, so presumably, what the vendor's gonna have, they're not gonna duplicate what you get at these brick and mortar places, you know, like you said. I think we ought to be very careful about this, not to be unintentionally harming what, what few establishments they have.
I think you're right. Well, I think, I think a seasonal license, like you mentioned. Would be right, one time seasonal license.
That's right.
I don't know if two hundred dollars is maybe too much, but maybe at least a hundred.
Well, a hundred.
I don't see, I don't know, what am I saying?
No, you don't, I wouldn't think hundreds enough.
But you said, I'm gonna say brick and mortar pays four hundred dollars.
Depends on their sale, just give you a ballpark, average, it goes all over the place.
As they report sales, do we know that they?
Yeah, they're charging taxes, it's easy to get that stuff.
And I appreciate your weight on half the merchants, but I'm surprised that there hasn't been more input from merchants.
They're not happy about it.
Well, I don't know, that's the question, where are they? Why do they?
They said they're unhappy, but they don't show up.
They, FBI has that, that's what's going on, because they know he's on, on the board.
I have to go over here and reflect their input.
I know, I try to tell them here, I get phone calls about it, and it's, it's basically these guys put in a lot of money into these buildings, and rather have them down there, but they don't do it.
I agree with, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the brick and mortar guys, they're, they're the backbone of this town, but by the same token. During the peak season, you can't get waiting on them. I mean, you just.
I'm not, I'm not even talking about restaurants, I'm taking, restaurants take care of that, so they're too busy. Changing their capacity, they can't take any.
Right, right, but I'm talking about the sandwich shop.
I'm, I'm talking about the shirt vendors and stuff like that, the little shops that owe the total. People can affect their business, it's not gonna affect their business because you're not gonna show up for the shops anyway, so they're not gonna do it.
It's gonna be hot the whole time.
It's gonna be something of the cart style vendor. A t-shirt guy is not gonna make it down the boardwalk, this is just not gonna happen, it's. It's gonna be food.
You can't see.
People are gonna try it, people are gonna try it.
The guests don't see it. Or if you want a sports, definitely not.
It's gonna be beverages, food, you know. Ice cream, there's a cart guy that runs around with the Italian ice. My kid would be, Jack did sorbets at the farmer's market. And they, you know, they were making, they did a hundred dollars, five or twenty bucks one day, saw that. And they were, how long was it, two hours, three hours?
Four hours.
Four hours?
Three hours.
I think they saw.
Most of it was bandaged.
Or the sun, it's three hours.
It's all versus a bandage because they.
So that brings up another issue, if a vendor sells out by two o'clock in the afternoon, is he obligated to stay there? Rest of the day? You know, we're talking about commitment.
Again, the model is the, uh, the farmer's market, uh, which is once a week. Compared to this model, which was every day. I don't know how you fault someone or hold it against this, as far as their, you know, attendance commitment, if they happen to have a very successful day. And be ready to pack in at two in the afternoon.
Yeah, you can't fault them, because especially during the weekends, that's slow, the weekends, they'd be aware of wanting to, they're out there all the time. What is this subject?
So the attendance requirement Monday, well, I'm gonna say Monday was a good day, but, you know, Tuesday to Thursday. I can see it being difficult for some of these vendors to want to commit to. So again, looking at the farmer's market as a model, they have an attendance requirement, even this next number of days, you lose your spot. I don't know the best, the best transferable model to, to this.
Now, that's good, deal weekend to make that, probably most of the people are there.
Right, we think a one time fee kind of fixes that.
Is there anybody in the staffs kind of working on this, I mean, you need a little task force or something to, because, no, I mean, it's a nice starting for that model, but this is not one day. We need it for three hours, I mean, this is a little complex.
That's correct. That's why, and again, maybe the farmer's market is an onsite manager. Maybe onsite manager, again, farmer's market is gonna be wrapping up, so I don't know what kind of analysis they're gonna do, how they're gonna do it as well. Then maybe things from their model, things can change.
They're already slowing down, I mean.
Well, so the onsite manager, nine AM to sunset. It's about May one to September, it's, it's a lot, not compared to any of that. As opposed to a drive by observation or walk through observation at lunchtime.
Although I would be at that as well, you know, it's a big later.
I'm gonna take this.
If you can do attendance, it would be, I would be a some of the weekend.
It would hate a lot of people with that. You know something, we might, I don't know how much we want to manage this, but. I think we might consider the thought, nothing is solved in glass.
Plays bottles and stuff like that.
Are you really sure you're on that?
Huh?
I think you, I think you could.
Yeah, because if that happens to break them.
Yeah.
There's no, I don't have no guys.
I believe, I think there's no drives to the beach sign, but. Could still bring them down. Generally, yeah, generally the rules on most places, like the rest of the.
Bad idea. But it's just something. This is.
I think you're right, and just, we have that.
This is a pretty, uh, this is a pretty open. Ordinance if you want. For like a, whatever, so I know it's gonna go to, to the town council. And I can see, uh, next April, we're just, we're still trying to fiddle around here. Because the lawyer has to get a hold of this, and it takes him ten months to put the go through, easy document like we gave him.
The lawyer got the ball, but there was no follow up, so there's two, 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 two people related to that.
Andy, is there interest with the town council on this, or do they know about it?
I don't think they really.
Are we just chasing our tails here?
I don't think they know too much about it, but, I mean.
Are they gonna want specificity on this?
I think they don't want specificity in the administration of it.
But I'm talking about, they don't want documents to be put together over the market, you know? Sure. Yeah. Well, this is gonna be a lot of work.
Thank you for the concept and send it back, you know, the work ethic.
I think it's why you're past COVID, and see if they even want to pursue this. This is gonna be a lot of work.
Anything, you know, if I come down, if they get enough, if they get enough backlash on the business side, it's not a restaurant that doesn't want certain aspects of shirts out and stuff like that. You know, it can be almost restricted just to a food vendor.
No class food?
Yeah, no class food. Five hundred million works.
Yeah.
If this didn't start at the council, we'd probably get some sense of where they are before going to a shop.
I started with that. This actually started with the.
Yeah, but.
And they might be.
Yeah. They could start with, yeah, start, actually start with some brick and mortar. They wanted to have a satellite, satellite version of their own place in different locations.
Yeah.
That's what I see happening.
Well, they could be realized that they could deal with both.
Well, that's a people thing.
Yeah.
And that's a hard damn people thing.
It is a hard, it's a hard thing to manage two different facilities.
You can't, can't help, I'm obviously.
Very, it's not easy, you have to have some really trusting people.
It's a people thing.
A lot of cash in that.
It's a people thing.
I'm kind of a little distracted to consider. Would be. Vendors and trucks in the park area. That's, I mean, it's not, it doesn't serve the same purpose of. Should be to Bay Avenue, but it is a location that, you know, that is animal appropriate. Where, you know, trucks can sit out, they're able to maintain a hundred and fifty foot distance from a brick and mortar establishment, and at least provide another option. It's not the most convenient thing to pay to come off the beach, but at least it's an alternative, it's, it's another place, it's more places, maybe. And it doesn't deal with some of the open space issues, some part time vendors, I need my space for a year, sorry, do you need a shift?
The, the park must be busy.
It does, well, I guess it is.
Park, uh, the, the, a lot of boats will in and out of the weekend for fishing, recreation fishing.
Well, pardon lot.
Both of them.
Yeah, but, top, I'm sorry.
Because with that, even when half those boats go off the water, and that rush over the chain, it's way to never have since it's late.
Right.
We go to an alternative source of. To grab something to go before they leave.
But there's plenty of area over here.
At least it's another source, because you get just many people, not as many, because you got a fair amount of people over there going in and out of the water for fishing.
So what were you hoping to come, what were you hoping to get from us on this effort?
Progress?
Yeah, just, just, on progress, it says the direction is bad. I would love to hear from Gene or.
Gene is a major. He's not a fan of this.
Or, or the chain, I mean, I, what we're talking about, the, the hot dog carts and that sort of thing. I don't have any, I think it would be a very convenient thing for our beachgoers, and I think it would be, um, a real, a plus to, to our beach. But I think food trucks. That might, the brick and mortar guys might be a little bit more concerned with that. I don't know, I'm just guessing. If I had a restaurant, depending for, to bill for taxes and all that stuff, and then. Because those, those food trucks can be real elaborate with base, you know, they can, they can put out twelve dollar meals.
And again, basically, the only place that food truck is on day.
Well, or, or the call right. The chain, the people would probably be interested in that, say, at least, unless it could be their truck. The thing that I would like to see is to get a little bit of feedback from the town council. Should we even be pursuing this?
I thought the town council was behind it.
You're the only one who knows about it?
Oh, yeah, I think they all, they all.
They all do?
Well, those two do.
Well, can we, uh, can we agree on this, this purpose here, and send it over for initial?
You?
Yeah.
So it's, what is, since December two fifteen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Is this going to affect any of your places on the west side, or between Randolph and Mason?
Or is? The only thing for the, uh, the draft for, if someone's.
Church Mark.
Yeah, yeah. Not, not bringing our.
They had them in the bus track.
Because they'll be.
Oh, bus track.
Yeah, very much best, we didn't follow.
Yeah, this would be something to take to pound council, and I see, you know, they wanna kill it, or get, get more to tag, or.
Because we can't get, at most, stuff we have in front of already. For instance, you may treat them venomous, where's that going back here?
Nothing.
That shit, then it's gonna work, that's, that's gonna work, that's your problem.
Right. Okay, so if they don't give us some direction on this.
Okay, so if they don't give us some direction on this, we're gonna go ahead and do this for next year.
So this can go, this, this can go on the work session in November too?
We're sticking in there. They could, they're, well, it's terrible, but at least if they want to pursue.
Yeah, I, for the frozen time to just a week, done. I think the biggest thing is, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of money with taxes and ice.
Well, that can be worked out.
Oh, we can figure that out.
We can work that out. That'd be a good thing.
Maybe never, you could get some public input.
And then one of the things, a question about this, is there something, a wording that talks about the pilot aspect of this that we want to try it out and evaluate it before or cashing it or something?
No, and the interesting thing is that I was contemplating working into the text of section three point fifteen B at a sunset period. Which is to say that if this section is in effect for an eighteen month period or twelve month period, at which time it's reevaluated. Okay. Because, I don't know, it fundamentally changes the language in the open space industry. That's power value wise, things will leave, leave open again. Right. Agreed.
I agree. So that needs to be put in there, right?
I would think it needs to be put in there or at least with the operations of it, that the operations of it has to update. So whether it's put into the ordinance or not.
Or the permit or something like that.
Somebody gotta adjust the, the, the other side.
I, I think the operations side would be the best place to do it, otherwise, if you put in the ordinance, somebody who's just sticking up for me, knowing the details, might ask some more, more questions than you're willing, that you're not willing to answer, because you don't have answers.
Yeah, and then it becomes another text amendment.
Yeah, it's not just a repeal.
Right, unrestrained about the facts.
No, ideas get said in a play. Well, a little bit of town.
Well, I mean, we're, I think we put some following, don't have time for that then.
Like, point out that the big people are active there. Um, and I would go to, I just want to share the discussion in. And I just emphasize to them that this is just rough trade, it's just a conceptual, you know, they're.
We're, we're trying to get a sense of where they want us to go with it. That's really, put all purpose in the exercise. All business sees, that makes a comprehensive plan, joint public hearing at town council.
Well, the special meeting on the twenty ninth, the council will leave the matter on the complaint because of several questions that they had about the complaint. So did not set a November first public hearing date. So as a result of council not setting a November first public hearing date, I brought, I brought to the planning commission setting a December sixth regular December meeting date. Public hearing date. To allow me one's period of comments and review of the comprehensive.
What are the questions of?
This is, this is what I, this is what I got.
There's a couple, there's a couple of big things that we'll need to be addressed before we do it. We're gonna change just how.
They are, they're on our screen or in the paper?
This is what they are. Zoning changes in the harbor district that with the rezoning of the block, for example, of harbor district to industrial that's already working for it as opposed to a mixed use harbor. That some of the language about, you know, what's currently in the comprehensive plan about hotels and mixed use housing, every mixed use development everywhere in the harbor district is no longer, you know, likely to happen or has already been sort of overridden by the list of the day, which is the site that we're supposed to design. So something, a couple of them are just text changes. Future draging of, especially like the harbor of the draging in the future, the harbor draging is considered right now, so again, I guess towns will take that one.
Could be drags again, committing to two businesses there, thirty five feet.
We've, we've got this closed area now, it's gonna be even easier.
Eventacular is no longer viable, but mainstream is.
Say that again?
Eventacular.
Were you personal and, oh, as an apparent company to.
So we've got in our partnership section. So that's a partner that's gonna be headed out and mainstream partner can be retained. And I'll just raise myself to the last two. The town council priorities section remains the two thousand and nine priorities.
I may come.
I defer to the council.
I pretty much said, look, now what guy can you guide us on that?
Say, everyone's.
I saw it before.
No.
They saw it before and it's like the reason they didn't get touched, because he didn't give any, he didn't give us any guidance to do it. So we need some guidance, that's part of the line, and we'll update that to be current. So I know that's part of the thing.
I'm sorry, they're looking for us to provide the guidance?
No, no, we got, or the council can give us guidance to do that, but we don't know what to do there, totally. So anything that was not touched specifically because we got no guidance from us.
Okay.
So I think part of the thing we could go through with the council was to figure out.
So it's their, it's their action?
Yeah. That, that's what I got.
Two years from now, okay, but starting out in the process already.
Well, those are.
We have them five years.
Yeah, it's five years from me to start.
We're gonna get signed, yeah.
Five years?
Oh, start it with year? Start it? I don't think so. I think it's, it's a speculative thing.
Yeah, it needs to be concluded in a five year period. Every five years, one year can shadow review and make any amended changes, irregularly changes. But if that, if that takes six months, then you can start later. If it takes three years, then two years after the.
We're pissed.
Oh, let's get three years on this. But Jones said, oh, wow, Jones said, five years doesn't start until the comprehensive plan is something.
Correct.
Well, when you said it's, it needs to be done every five years, whether no matter how long, if it takes, if it takes four years to do a comprehensive plan, one year later we're gonna do it?
We're seven years after we're not in a comprehensive plan. And, and, but the point is, the review has been going on for three of those seven years.
Yes, true, yes.
So I have no trouble saying that the town, Kate Charles, is the biggest obligation of this action. It's just taking the long. Well, it's anticipated to be a one-year process. And so they're far enough, they're, they have started two, wait, two years of leeway time.
Yeah.
Three years after that process began, which was August twenty third, isn't.
And you can look at the difference between those, the three years, and what's changed, how much difference has really changed, and then all of a sudden, it's radical. This, what you're talking about with the harbor part is, you have a comprehensive plan, the first other thing, you just ratified it and all of a sudden they find out that it's back to industrial, it kind of doesn't drive, so that's the reason. They're gonna have to take that into consideration, with that taken care of. I don't know if you tested, it'd be a big trouble.
I think there's some text amendment, I, for which, I don't know, I'll make the point that I'll just maritime mixed use in the harbor, some of the language currently is, we need hotels on the water, restaurants and commercial locations with harbor front wardways, multifamily dwellings, a major portion of harbor's age.
So you know, you know, don't forget the tattie property, and I know what's going on there, but he could, he can still make that a mixed use, he could do that. You know, but that deal goes through. He's saying, when you do that, it's not awful, but I mean, he could do that.
No, yes, the most likely to be, yes.
So that, that's.
You don't know that, you checked the six, six hundred.
That's still, that's, that still could be valid.
It could be. And then the last thing, and it's fairly stated, and I don't know how, and it can be addressed in this cycle for the review of the comprehensive plan. And I don't believe that was the council's interest, I don't want to speak for them, but I don't think that was the council's interest in making sure that it was addressed in this cycle. Is the age of the supporting documents, all between ten and twenty years old. And there should be a plan to either retire some documents, if I can, or present a plan to update them. And as was, as was pointed out, that doesn't happen cheap or.
Well, I think, we, okay, we could probably come up with a straw plan to update them and give a, I, I think that's fair.
And there are a couple that should be retired. The nineteen ninety six preservation plan should be retired as a, as an informational document, it should go to, you know, sort of the.
The historic document.
Historic document.
And we've already updated it in the spots of council and business comments too. So it's been one, one updating.
Right, the historic review board has been working on.
Matter of fact, we could probably spend next month's meeting doing some of that.
Could do.
Because we don't have to meet with council next month. We can, we can.
There was a lot of town democratic stuff in there that was old too. Based on earnings, race, all kinds of.
Whatever, it's the census.
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten census.
Well, that's something about.
It's every five years. Yeah, it's sort of the census.
It's just like, by the time we get this stuff nailed down, it's old.
Yeah, and that's, well, I know, the way, the way things have been moving in town, things are moving so fast relative for government's speed, it's moving fast. Trying to keep up with what we need once a month. So. It's just, and then stuff just happens, I mean.
Well, those are healthy.
They may have a planning commission.
Those are healthy comments, I mean, you've been doing things now. They're not exactly aligned.
Well, they're trying to make sure the current climate reflects the current status.
Yeah, so. It'll be a continuous comprehensive plan here. That's what we're doing.
A living document. Well, it's radically changed, as we've seen, really does.
Yes, we finally got started. I mean, you got the yacht club, you got all that stuff down there, I would think that's.
Oh, where did you start?
Huh?
Where did you start?
Well, these are good problems, I guess.
Well, I do think, I mean, we're, we're just trying to bring the twelve month jobs too, so this is a good.
So the summer project now on hold again? Is the harbor project now on hold again?
What harbor?
Which? The Cherrystone project.
No, 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 no.
You were talking about that tannin market?
The tannin problem.
Some, some of it goes this month for the industrial side. So that settles, then you're gonna start seeing stuff happening. The tannin problem is supposed to settle at the end of October. Supposed to, so to say.
If there are boulders involved, like, it'll happen quick, quickly.
Yeah.
You, you put that yacht club down there overnight?
Yeah, once that, once that property sells, we can start seeing stuff happening. There's an extra year to treat that issue.
A bit.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I either need a motion for December sixth public hearing or move it to November first week of this year. Because I think we still need, we could still leave the publication deadline for the two weeks if there's decisions made November one, yeah. If it's December sixth. So I make commercial, we said, public hearing for December sixth.
Second.
On the paper? Any opposed?
So carry it, thank you.
It is an interest.
I think it's nine before item D of whole business.
Want to walk us through it?
Yes. It's pretty self-explanatory, it, it came in the mail and had a chance to open it up. The revisions in the mark threes are, are, are clear. But there was little commentary by the attorney in his email except for one issue that's not noted here. He could refer to it as clawbacks, which is to say the requirement that we've got, if someone defaults on their obligation, they move out of town, their business fails, they sell business, et cetera. If anything that they received or withdrew needs to be handed out to the town. That's why our ordinance is written now. This question was, could we find that anywhere else? And actually, in Town of Hillsville, I leave that one that I know of. I can do more research on it. Town of Hillsville is very similar. So there is a clawback, called a clawback, there's a clawback clause in at least one other municipal tourism zone in the county of Virginia. So that's, that's what we had as far as.
Why are we getting into pie? Because I thought we were probably in the back in the prior years.
I think what it really states too is, is the fact that we're a Dillon State, and he's probably looking for some legal basis for, for not stopping us in our tracks because there's no prior allowance, I was saying, well, just my interpretation, though.
But the way it sounds to me is like, if they move out of town and don't fulfill their obligations, they fulfill their obligations to get the credit for the previous year's expenditures. So.
If we have that grant or.
That's in there?
XX six.
I just don't know where that's gonna ever apply, based on what we've talked about. I mean, if they moved delivery out of town, they're not gonna, we're not, we're not, we're not prepaying this.
Right.
It's postpaid.
Correct. So what's the big deal?
That's for.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
This is all post, not pre. They're not gonna be a lump sum.
They have to pre-qualify it together.
They have to prove that they get it.
Right.
That's why I'm like, why do we even need that in there?
Okay.
Did I name?
Yeah.
I think it should be just, that should be go away. If there's nobody gonna get it, by doing it, prove it.
Otherwise.
We're gonna leave, leave stuff.
The definitions held up.
So he, he, he put the treasure out or?
Yes.
Out of, out of the blue.
Correct.
For what reason?
I don't know, I don't know that.
Issue.
A number, a number of things that Rick have related to administration have been sort of changed. Procedural and maybe the thinking is that some of these procedural things do not fit the ordinance.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, 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 that makes sense, okay, okay.
There are diagrams coming.
And I put, and I put a lot of the back of that too.
Okay.
Otherwise.
For approval, I guess.
Well, that was always there. This is, this is, that was followed by a technology zone ordinance, which.
Uh, you, right.
You should be worried.
Yeah, down here.
These are the ones that make a loss.
Correct. That's on page three.
Yes.
The administration may award written condition to the council for final approval. I think all that language is clear enough. Show the basic part. Number three under there. Again, this clarification. The clawback is number seven, is under XX six, number seven. Qualified tourism business leads the town to conduct business in another location within four years. After the expiration of incentive years that will be required to repay the town the total amount. Rules by tourism business leaves town to conduct business in another location within four years, after the expiration of incentive years that will be required to repay the town the total amount of economic stimulus credits received. It's described up. How do you want to force them?
Well, not only that, how, how, how relevant is it?
Yeah.
That's the, that's the, that's the bigger picture, bigger, bigger question.
And it's not like you're.
They've already qualified, they earned the right.
To me, yeah, they've earned it, so it draws it in next year.
So what do you want, we want to put this on the, uh, work schedule again?
Uh, and what the planning commission thinks we need to do for staff?
For November? I think so. It's been, this is almost two years old, a year and a half, a year and a half old.
Well, we're, I mean, the oldest document I can find related to the tourism zone goes back to July twenty fifth.
Well, yeah. They were the ones, they were the ones who wrote this.
Yeah, so November twenty nine sixteen, and that's made it to, in, uh, was it November last year?
No, it was December or summer, because remember the drags also went out to businesses in town, that was mid-December?
I'm fine with it.
I think it was, she zeroed comments back. Sorry? I think it was, she zeroed comments back, you know, the businesses about.
That's fine.
Uh, correct.
I remember we wanted to make electroactive to the beginning of this year, but that's not gonna happen unless council does something here. Or some, some.
I remember correctly, we, we said we would.
I know we said that.
Yeah.
Council did too. Yeah.
Do I have a motion to move this on count to council as amended?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Andy, I see there's no new business. Do I have a motion to?
I make a motion to return.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Second.